Good evening. I'm going to call the Brattleboro Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October six -- oh, it's Thursday, October 16th, 2025, to order. We had an executive session at 5:00 and no decisions were made. And we're beginning our regular meeting. And I believe at 5:00, Oscar probably asked John if the meeting was properly warned. And John said-
The meeting was properly warned.
Great. And does anyone know of any adjustments that are needed to the agenda? All right. So first order of business is to approve the minutes from September 24th and October 1st. Do I have a motion? Yes, Isaac?
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from September 24th and October 1st of 2025.
Great. Isaac has made a motion to approve the minutes from Sept- September 24th and October 1st. All Select Board members who agree, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And there we are, 5-0. Thank you very much. Chairs' remarks. I don't have any significant remarks to make, other than the fact that it gets dark early now. And every year, I remind people that if you're walking your dog in the dark with your black jacket on, you can't be seen.
Yep.
John, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I have a few. So, let's see. First of all, I wanted to remind everyone that there will be no town leaf collection this fall due to budget cuts. But Communications Coordinator Seth Thomas has been working with staff to put together a brief video with options for dealing with your leaves this year. And that will be going out soon. We're going to hear later on in this meeting from the Human Services Committee, but I wanted to just remind everyone that applications for the FY26 Human Services funding can be found on the town's website, brattleboro.gov. All applications are due on Wednesday, October 22nd, by 5:00 p.m. and should not include protected files that cannot be merged into a packet for the committee members. Interested applicants can send their applications to jessicastickler@jstickler@brattleboro.gov. Or they can be bring- people can bring them in right to the Town Manager's Office here at 230 Main Street. And please email Jessica if you have any questions. And then finally, I think there was a question at your last meeting about the Amtrak project. And town staff attended Amtrak's train station project management meeting last week and inquired about the schedule. And we learned that the surplus soils down there will be removed by late October or early November. We learned that the parking lot will be available for public parking again by late December as they finish up some final site work, do the paving and striping. And then the overall project is still expected to be completed by the end of February. That's all I have.
Great, John. Thank you very much. Are there Select Board members who have -- yes, Oscar, why don't you begin?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to give a brief update on the bridges situation. We had a meeting in person for the second time with New Hampshire Department of Transportation and Hinsdale, probably yesterday, if I had to guess. Amanda and I and Sue Fillion were there. We are starting to make consistent progress towards a solution, I think. And if anyone would like more info on details, please reach out. I'm happy to discuss it anytime. Thank you.
Anyone else? Amanda?
Sure, yes. I want to express gratitude for the smooth payment pavement on Western Avenue from Exit 2 downtown. An amazing collaboration between V-Trans, our very own Brattleboro Department of Public Works, our planning department, John Potter. It's looking really good. And all the subcontractors that assisted with a variety of tasks, sidewalks, extra, I mean, manhole, everything. It's looking really good, and I think we should. That bike lane is phenomenal. The parking is very clear, and it's just great. I also want to thank Jill Stell Tyler and the Community House for donating the mums. If anyone uses Exit 2 on a regular basis, the purple and white mums we planted together a couple weeks ago. And I also wanted to take this moment just to say appreciation for Brattleboro Police Department. And also just remind the public that you can call the Brattleboro Police Department, you can call the tip line, you can call dispatch. If you feel, if you see something, say something. We are a community that is working together to get drugs off our streets, to keep our children safe, and just maintain a community where we all feel safe. So that tip line is 802-251-811, or 8188. And dispatch is 802-257-7946. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. How about this side, gentlemen? All right, great. Let us proceed with the public participation. This is anyone who has a comment that they would like to make that is not part of tonight's agenda. So anyone who would like to, I see a hand, shout right up.
Hi, Alyssa Royo, RTM. I wanted to go along with Amanda's comments, and I realized that last time I addressed the Select Board, I was hyper-focused on that Green Street turn. And I failed to thank the workers, the crew, everybody involved in that, this massive project. The roads look great. Everything is bright, and I was just totally spaced it. And I just want to thank all parties involved. The crews are phenomenal. They're super nice. I wave to them. I see the same people all the time, and just thank you for everything, and I really want to thank the crew.
Thanks, Al. Anyone online? Yes, Star.
Hi, Star Lashronica, Library Director from the Berks Memorial Library right next door. And I just want to remind everybody that the Brattleboro Literary Festival, the 24th year of this amazing gift to the community, starts tomorrow night at 7:00 at 118 Elliott, and will carry on all day Saturday and Sunday. And we have over 44 authors coming. It's completely free. There is something for everyone here. So I do have programs that I'll leave outside if you want to start planning your days right now. But I hope to see you at some of the events.
Thank you, Star. Dick, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Dick DeGray. John, the last time we met, I can't remember when that was, it was so long ago, you gave us good news about the light synchronization from V-Trans. My next question is, how are we doing with the railroad for the piece of property that we need an easement for, to put that sidewalk in that we've been talking about for seven months, and the status on that? The other issue that I have noticed with this nice line striping on Canal Street by the co-op, when you are heading south in the upper crosswalk by the co-op, they finally got the lines striped where there's supposed to be no parking. And there are vehicles parking there. And when there are vehicles there, you have to slide over the yellow lines, and you're heading towards the traffic that's heading north. And I think it's a very dangerous situation. I would hope that the police are perusing that area and ticketing cars that are parked in that spot because it's very dangerous. I actually talked to Public Works about it, and I suggested that they make sure that they print "no parking" where they just have those white lines. But today, when I was driving down Canal Street, whoever provides a cleaning service for the co-op had their big rig there, and you have tractor-trailers coming up, and they really have to swing over into the other lane. And I think it's a really big safety hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you want me to address any of them?
Pardon me?
Do you want me to address it? So Dick had a question on the railroad easement. My understanding is that we do, we have made contact with the right people at the railroad now and have exchanged drawings, basically, and they are currently reviewing them to see if they would grant an easement over their property to the town. The traffic lines, we will certainly take a look at that and see if there's something that could be improved on that, that marking there. You're welcome.
All right. That was noisy. So, John, would you like to give a, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Okay. John, would you give us a thumbnail sketch of the consent agenda items?
Sure. Yes, there's seven items on your consent agenda tonight, Board. If you approve this agenda, you will be approving a $48,300 change order for the Williams Street Retaining Wall project to set the anchor rods deeper in the bedrock. You'll be committing up to $12,000 from the Global Warming Solutions Fund to be used for solar street lighting on Elliott Street. You'll be approving a parade permit for the annual Horribles Parade up Main Street on Halloween. You will be ratifying the low bid for FY26 fuel oil from Discount Oil in Keene for $2.495 per gallon. You'll be approving a parade and open air permit for the No King's Day event on Saturday, October 18th, in downtown Brattleboro. You'll be renewing a third-class liquor license for Echo Restaurant and Lounge at 69 Main Street. And you will be renewing a first- and second-class liquor license for Who's Wine at 972 Putney Road.
Great. So is there anyone who'd like to, on the Select Board, who needs to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I'm good.
All right. I will accept a motion to accept the-
A motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented?
Great. All Select Board members in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, please raise your hand.
Aye.
5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, regular business. Oh, the first one is a very delightful topic. John, do you want to, is there anything you want to say to introduce?
Sure. We have, your first item is the Brattleboro Festival Miniatures. And I would invite Melanie Khan and Kate Traskas to come up to the table here and tell us a little bit about your event.
Nothing happens in this town without Aaron Skaggs in the middle of the table.
I've heard that.
Here, here.
True that.
Well, welcome very much. Thank you for coming, and I can't wait to hear this presentation. Melanie, do you want to begin?
Sure, I'll start. So I'm Melanie Khan. For those of you who, I'm making your first acquaintance, I spell it with a Y for the-
People at home?
People at home. I am a Brattleboro resident since 1968, when my parents bought a farm in West Brattleboro, which I still to this day own. And we've been deeply involved in this community for many, many decades. I am also randomly, in addition to being a mushroom forager, a miniature enthusiast. And I came up with a rather harebrained, but it turns out, popular idea of having a miniature festival in our town at Christmas. And one might ask, why would we bother to do such a thing? At the core of it is that it is an economic development program for Brattleboro. So Destination Brattleboro, all of the stores, all of the storefronts, all of the nonprofits, galleries, restaurants, schools, are going to be involved in presenting the main street, our wonderful, beautiful main street, which has the most magnificent windows in, at any town in Vermont, with small and tiny scenes of their choosing. And it's all being sponsored and supported and presented by the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance. So I'm going to pass it over to them and then wrap up with a little bit about what you might expect come December and why we're presenting this to the Select Board.
Sure. So Downtown Brattleboro, the DBA, we have had a longstanding, working with the holiday decorations and the lights downtown. Last year, we did a holiday pop-up market in the Sam's space. And so Melanie approached us with this idea, and we thought, how brilliant. Let's add this to kind of the repertoire. We've been doing a holiday window contest the last couple of years. The stores have participated, and they get a prize. And so this really ups that, that tradition. It's really going to, we think, enhance our visitors' experience. And it also provides something novel and unique and nostalgic, I think, for a lot of folks to think about, you know, coming and peering into the windows and that being an invitation for folks to come inside and see the stores. So as Melanie was saying, our businesses have overwhelmingly jumped on the mini train and are being very creative in how they're interpreting this, this concept and really making it true and authentic to their unique stores. So that's just a teaser. You're going to have to come down and see it. But we, I, you know, we really want to thank Melanie for, for gifting us this, this idea. And I am, you know, Vermont Tourism is very excited about it. Vermont Magazine just spent a whole day with Melanie at the farm. We are underwriting on VPR. So I think there's a lot of positive press also and far-reaching that will attract visitors to the region and to downtown.
All I really have to add is that really at the core of most of what DBA does is inviting people to come downtown and fall in love with it. And I think that this initiative, while it's certainly an economic development initiative, I think it's also really about inviting people down to the space to feel connected and to feel welcomed and nostalgic, like Kate said. That's the part I'm most excited about, is locals and visitors and all of the merchants. Everybody is so thrilled and excited to see how this plays out.
And I'm going to wrap up because I know we have a little sliver of this meeting, and you have much more boring things to discuss. But if I was going to ask you how many merchants and nonprofits and restaurants you thought signed up to be involved in this, throw some numbers out. How many do you think storefronts are involved? Oh, it's okay, you can participate.
Fifteen.
How many sevens? Thirty?
Forty, 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 fifty.
Come on, guys, you don't trust your down pat. We went through a list today, we have over 100.
Wow.
We went through the list today. We have 100 participating nonprofits, restaurants, bars, galleries, merchants. Everybody has signed on to this project. Libraries, that's a nonprofit, libraries. And not only with their windows, but also with events. So every single weekend of the walk, we have events. We have sandglass theater. We have the museum putting on, of course, a Mad Hatter Tea Party with model trains in the train station. We have all 12 schools in the district working on their dollhouses that were delivered to them this week so that they can create spirit houses and then come back and show them off in the Boys and Girls Club.
And Chesterfield.
And Chesterfield, because I live in Chesterfield, and Aaron's kids go to school. So we are so beyond excited to see the enthusiasm for this project. We hope that, well, we already got a lot of buy-in regarding parking, which we super appreciate. I do want to do a shout-out to Matt Marine's window at Boomerang. He, he's been like my, we're not going to get there, you're not going to get there. Oh, you're getting there. Oh, no, I'm going to be the one that has to stand up and say I was wrong. So his, his display is going to have a whole miniature boomerang with a window inside. We can see the window up above. And all of his cars in front that he's doing all have little orange- little orange-yellow parking tickets on them.
But if you want a sneak peek, one of the windows in the Sam's space has a sprinkling of ideas around what businesses are doing and some pieces that we have already placed around. I should mention, we were at the Welcome Center in Guilford for a full month as well. So the buzz is out there. We welcome all of you to come and participate, and we're excited.
Any questions before we jump off?
Well, I think we'll start with, with the board, and again, we all want to thank you. This is a gift you're giving to the town of Brattleboro. We all appreciate it very much. I must say, it very much occupied my household.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Mary, her daughter, built every single spirit house at Hatch Space. I think I-
Yeah, well, no, it's wonderful, and someone at the Hatch Space said, these are the miniature dollhouses that are going to all the schools. And someone said to, to my daughter, you know, people might, these kids might not remember what they learned in school this year, but they're going to remember that they got to, you know, to decorate the interiors and ex, of this dollhouse, and that's going to stick with them, and, and that's, that's your gift, Melanie, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. I really wanted to involve schoolkids, as you know. Miniatures mean a lot to children, right? And one of the, I'm going to just end on this because I know we're out of time, but one of the, unless there's more questions, one of the houses that I'm putting up in the Sam's window, which is going to be absolutely beautiful, it's going to have a running train that Chad Farnham did, and Liz Richards is putting up her carolers, and next to Liz Richards' carolers is going to be Annie Richards' courtroom. And we lost Annie last year, and Annie used miniatures to teach children how to navigate the court system in Brattleboro. So we're going to do an homage to Annie next to her mom's carolers in the Sam's window, and it's going to have the Lego Museum and the trains and the train station and the courtroom and the carolers from the Richards, and it's going to tell the story of Brattleboro and what we're about. So it's very meaningful. There's a really wonderful project, and, and I hope that you all will tell your friends to come see. We can be both and. We can be creative, we can be artistic, we can be whimsical, we can be family-friendly, and we can also have struggles and challenges, and we can be both things, and we can lean into both just as heavily. One side doesn't have to outweigh the other. We're all those things.
That's great. Other, other comments?
This is terrific, thank you.
I just, oh, sorry. I can tell you that when the idea was presented to me, I immediately went way back in my childhood, growing up a city rat in the boroughs of New York, and every year, doing the Sodrin to 59th Street, which if you're not familiar with New York, is where Bloomingdale's is, and they used to do this amazing, and it felt like it, when I was four and five, like this magical thing that they would just completely dedicate their windows to that sort of spirit and, and that thousands and throngs of people that would show up. So this is sort of the spirit that got me excited about this, and I think we're, you're really on to something here, and I thank you for, for bringing it to us.
By the way, Peter's not doing his own window, it's getting done for him. He's getting a full ski slope in his window courtesy of the DBA, and it's, I talked to the maker today, it's amazing, and he's going to have a beautiful window, but he's not lifting a finger.
Nothing.
Except that he said yes.
Amanda, you were about to say something?
I just said, thank you. It's great.
Thank you for inviting me, Amanda. Amanda encouraged us to come and share with the board what we're doing because sometimes the news in here isn't always great, and so if we can raise our level of everything from visitors to hotel visits to restaurants, we're going to have a lot of volunteer greeters on the streets talking to folks, we're going to have data collection, we're going to have a mini museum pop-up at the Latches Theater. There's going to be so much going on, you're not going to be able to miss it, but if you want to get involved, just jump on the DBA website. There's lots of ways to become involved as a volunteer or in any other way. Somebody might draw you in to make a, a mini if you're not careful.
Great.
I do have some recards, and I'll, I'll leave them with you guys, just a handful up here if anybody wants to learn that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you for coming, and we'll have a happy holiday. Yeah. All right, what's next? I got too many papers here. Human Services, thank you very much. David, you want to join us at the table? All right, the next item is, John, you want to introduce it?
Sure. We, we have, we have representatives from the Human Services Committee here tonight to update the board on the work that they've been doing.
Great. Okay, so we have David Minor, and is it-
And Sarah, Sarah Turbo.
Sarah Turbo, great. Welcome, and please tell us what you want to tell us.
So this is, we're beginning the process for the coming year. We started actually a couple months ago in taking the opportunity to review our documentation, make changes and so forth. We have a, a great committee, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to work with each of them. Alyssa Arroyo, Robin Morgan, Tara O'Brien, Tom Oxholm, Avery Thompson, Zach Wiggum, Sarah Turbo, and, you know, I think that, in few meetings that we've had, it's a great mixture of folks, and people have, will speak up, and we have a, you know, I think a positive outlook as to what we're looking to, to accomplish.
Great. So again, I'm Sarah Turbo, I'm the vice chair of this committee, and actually, our whole committee is actually here in this room, which is pretty awesome, actually, and really demonstrates the enthusiasm I think we all have for the great services that we're able to provide through this funding for the town. Whoever was, I don't know the names of the folks we're just presenting, but there was this nice, like, we can have joy and we can also provide for people and lean in for the difficult moments, and I really think that the human services budget and the Human Services Committee is sort of an expansion on that theme. So I'm actually, I'm excited to talk about the last two years of funding, and then I'll turn to David to speak about this coming year's process. So next slide, please. Whoop, whoop, okay. So the last two years, the numbers for the last two years are up here on this slide, and I just, I want to note a couple of things. So the first thing is that the last two years, 2% of the overall budget, the overall town budget, has been approved by RTM for this funding, and that number has gone up as the budget has gone up, obviously. The second, the second thing is that, to note that in fiscal year '25, we got far lower than the amount that was, the amount that was allocated by RTM, the requests were far lower than that. Last year, the requests were far higher than that, and so that was a really interesting change, to notice how many more organizations were requesting more funds from the committee and from the town. The third thing is that in fiscal year '25, we took a look at the amount that was requested and the amount that was approved by RTM, and we made some really frugal and thoughtful decisions about making sure that our money was being spent well, and we actually didn't, didn't propose that we spend all of the funds that RTM had allocated to us. So as you can see, that amount was $367,810 to 38 organizations, and that was really due to the rigor of our process, which we're going to talk a little bit more about. We really thought about, actually, we don't just look at the organizations and say, ah, this person's, this organization's looking for this much money, okay, great, and we have enough funds to give to everybody, and so we're just going to give everybody what they're asking for. We really think about, you know, do we actually think that this is, this funding to this organization is warranted? This past year, because there was such a large amount that was requested to really worthy causes and really worthy organizations and really worthy efforts in the town, we did present to RTM, and it was approved, to spend the full amount that RTM had proposed that year, or had approved that year. Last year, we only have the numbers on this from last year specifically, what that actually went down, came down to was about $69 for the median household here in the town, in terms of what taxpayers are paying towards this amount of money that's going to all of these 42 organizations that we were able to fund last year. And the return on that is really pretty amazing. We tallied up the number of users of all of the different services that we are funding, and it was 25,000 number, 25,000 service users, which is twice the number of people in Brattleboro, which means that on average, two people, sorry, two, each resident was using two services that we were funding. So we're really proud, we're really, really proud of this, of this funding and how it's being, how it's serving the community. Next slide, please. So last year, we did a bit of a breakdown into the sectors that our money, the money was going towards. The largest chunk, 51%, was addressing some of the major issues that I think we all agree are facing the town, so substance use, mental and physical health challenges, housing, victim support and safety services. 19% was going to food access, and I'll remind everybody that last year, there was a huge increase in the cost of living and a huge increase in the cost of food, and so that, that number was really significant, and then 30% to youth, elder and disabled services. And the, this is just a smattering of the services that this funding was able to help these organizations provide, and it really gets down to the nitty-gritty of what do people need to be using every single day. So dental care for the uninsured, space for 12-step meetings, overnight shelter, meal delivery for homebound seniors, tons and tons and tons of food to our food pantries that had an enormous increase in demand in the last year, and we expect that to increase. And again, I think as a town, we should be incredibly proud that we help provide these services to the people who live here. I think they're really meaningful, and they really provide together a social safety net for the town. And this coming year, and we'll turn to David to talk about the process that we undergo, which is lengthy and rigorous, you know, we're, we're expecting the need to increase, and the reason for that is both because of the increased cost of living, it's also because of the current federal situation. We know a lot of organizations have lost funding or lost possible funding, and even last year, the Putney Food Shelf, for example, had a doubling of the use by Brattleboro residents specifically. So they had to double the amount of the year prior using the Putney Food Shelf, which is pretty incredible. And so we're, we're going into this year recognizing that we think there's tremendous need in the community, and we're excited to think about how to best meet that need. So I'll turn to you, David.
Okay, thank you. So looking at the process and procedures, as I said at the outset, we've, we met, we met a couple times in order to get everyone taking a look at the application and the process and so forth as to what we want to do, make some changes as necessary. Our first formal program was the question and answer session, which we had last week, I believe. We had 17 representatives representing 20 different organizations come, and that is the largest participation that I can recall coming, coming to, to one of our Q and A programs. What we talked about was, as John pointed out at the outset, the applications are due on the 22nd. We talked about the importance of making sure that they come in on a timely basis. What will happen is, while the applications will come in, they will be put up online so that we are then able to, to act, we, the committee, are able then to access them. We'll create a list of the application, applicants, the amount of requests that they're made, and provide that list to each of the committee members. Each member will then take a look and recuse themselves or identify organizations that they are somewhat, they're either affiliated with, receive, pay, pay from, they have family members who are associated with it and so forth, and they will not, having identified those organizations, they will not participate in the, in the, in the final decision regarding those organizations. We'll then assign the applications to each, each member, divvying them up so that they're handled separately, and then we spend the next four or five weeks, three hours or more a week, reviewing each application. The committee members will, will present the application, talk about, talk about what, what they do, how they do it, the services they provide, their financials, because we want to make sure about financial strength and so forth. We are making no decisions at that point in time. We are not talking about the merits of the organization. All we're talking about is what is presented. We then get through all of that, and then what we do is, we meet, we go into deliberative session, or actually, I'm sorry. Each, each member then goes through, we have a Rubik's, Rubik's score system, and each member goes through and then scores each application. The applicant, the totals then are sent to me and put the totals out for each organization. Now, with eight people, there'll be organizations where there may be one or two people that recuse themselves from making any decisions, and so what we'll then do is take each organization and divide their total score by the number of committee members who are voting on it. So if there are two recusals, those, the scores will be divided by six. If there's one recusal, the vote will be divided by seven. We then take the average and list all the averages so that we're then able to see the weighted score for each organization. At that point, we then go into deliberative session. At the deliberative session, anybody who's recused will be excused from the meeting as we go through and discuss into those individual applications, and at that point, we begin to make the decision as to how the scores look. Once we get through all that, then we'll make the decisions about allocating the funds. Now, as Sarah pointed out a couple years ago, we had fewer applications or fewer amount requested than, grant requested than would have been allocated. What we did though is we went through each one, we weighed them, we weighed the merits, we turned down some, what we did is, and we did not grant full applicant, full request to everybody. This last one, where we had $770,000 requested, almost $300,000 more than what was allocated, we had to make some, some serious decisions. And so we went through and, and, you know, application by application, weighed it and, and made, made some decisions, and we came up with our list. We sent out then notifications to the organizations that we had denied and provided them an opportunity, if they wished, to come and meet before the committee and, you know, talk about what they, you know, what they provided, who they were and so forth. We listened, listened to those that did come back, we went back into another deliberative session, and in some cases, we did grant, grant some money, and so we had then to make an adjustment. Once we got through all that, we then- Once we got through all that, we then provided the, the list to be published by the town. One change that will take place this year is that we will post on the human services page on the town, town website, what the score, what average score was for each application. We will not put up the individual member's scores, but you'll see, you'll see the average score of, of the total, total application. And then, we spend the next couple, few weeks putting together all the work and documentation necessary to give to the town to be able to, to publish it. It takes 40 hours or so, 50 hours or so between, you know, last, you know, middle, middle of October, you know, through the end of December to, to get everything completed. And hence, the importance of getting your applications in on time. You know, we have to hit the ground running. And once again, I thank all the members of the committee, because there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of consideration to be done. And, you know, we treat this with enthusiasm, and, and we recognize the importance of, of what we're doing. Thank you.
Well, David, Sarah, and all the committee members, thank you very much. I'm, I'm sure we have a lot of questions, but before we begin, I, I just, again, want to thank you not only for the work that you do, but the time you put into it. Where do we want to start? Isaac, do you have comments or questions?
Just want to express my gratitude for all of your time and energy and the rigor, the process that you have to evaluate these applications and help support these important initiatives in our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Isaac.
Peter. Anyone else? Do you have any comments?
I do, but I didn't know if somebody else did.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation of your process. I am wondering, does the general public have access to see the applications prior to your approval in terms, is that something that is part of the process?
The applications aren't, aren't posted, that, aren't reviewed, but what we do is that, is that our meetings where we discuss the applications are open to the public, and, and certainly, they're, they're welcome, welcome to come. I think one thing that we probably need to do this year is, is we will try to post the applications that we will be reviewing, so that, so that, you know, you can, you can, you can see the, you can see.
The list of the organizations.
The organizations that, that, that we're going, be going through that day. And we do have a, a three-hour time limit, more than three hours, we, our heads begin to hit the table. So, you know, if, if we don't get to a particular organization, we'll pick, we'll pick it up the following week. But, you know, we'll, we'll put that out there for everybody to see.
So, just, so the applications are not, the general public is not eligible to see the applications, but they are eligible to see the list of organizations applying prior to, prior to granting?
Right. And what we'll do is that we will, you know, have the application available and, and to be reviewed as, as, as we are discussing it.
Gotcha. Awesome. Thank you. I have a couple other questions.
Go right ahead.
Are there any caps for what dollar amount can be requested through, through the process?
We have not established any caps. I mean, certainly, we had to put some in force last year. And we've asked the organizations, I think we made, made the point at, at the Q and A session, you know, particularly last year, you know, with the total amount of the request, there was no way possibly to meet, you know, the needs that were defined. And so, you know, we certainly asked, and would ask the, the organizations to respect not only their needs, but the needs of, of the other organizations in town, and, and as, as they're making their requests.
Thank you. One other thought is, in your evaluation process, have you considered prioritizing projects based on need if our town has a budget shortfall and we have to adjust the amount of money that we are able to contribute?
I, I think in, across the board, you know, I think we're looking at the, and, you know, the need of the organization and the need of the community. I think, you know, we've identified, I think in the, in the pie chart, you know, identifying the percentage of, you know, where our dollars were going, I think, you know, is, is, you know, fairly meets the needs, the needs of the community. And I think that, I mean, I think that we try to certainly be aware of, of, you know, of what, of what's happening. And not only, you know, from our budget shortfall, but I think, as Sarah pointed out, I think we're expecting, and that's part of, part of the application process too, is where are they finding short, shortfalls in, in, in money that they've received in the past, you know, because of pressures, what's happening with the federal government, the state government, and so forth. I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know, that is something we've asked for, and certainly we'll analyze.
The other thing I'll say is that we do, we, I mean, I think, I would say that our entire process is about what do we think that there's, these needs exist in the community, and do we think that these services meet those needs? I think that that's the, the question that we're pretty much considering. And we also think about the, the bang for the buck that we're getting, right? So, one of the things that we do do is we ask for the unique number of Brattleboro residents that are served by that particular organization or by the particular program that's requesting funding. And we actually, in this, this past year, we oftentimes divided the amount that was being requested by the number of people who they're serving to kind of get a sense of whether or not the per-person cost felt reasonable and a good bang for the buck. And so, we do really take into consideration not just what is the need, but do we think that this funding is actually going to go a long way in serving as many people as possible, if that makes sense?
It does, yeah. That's really great, yeah.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah. Do you want to go to the microphone?
Excuse me. Want to come to the microphone, Robin?
Robin Morgan, Brattleboro, and I am a member of the committee. I wasn't sure, Amanda, if your question was talking about prioritizing by the need of the people served or the financial need of the organization. But I just wanted to add that that also is something that we consider. So, sometimes, there's been orgs that asked for money that we didn't fund because they had, they were part of like a national network, like for instance, Red Cross, that, you know, is really needed when something happens here that they serve, but they're going to be fine if they don't get their $3,000 from Brattleboro or whatever. So, that element of like how dire is the financial need from us to give money is also something that we consider.
Great. And, and part of the reason that I actually think this funding is so valuable is because there are a number of organizations in this town for which this amount of funding actually is really essential. It's not just sort of a, a small percentage of their budget, but actually really, really supports the whole organization, right? And so, we think about that as well.
Avery, did you want to add something?
Avery Thompson, I'm also a member of the committee. And as you can see, we all think about this question all the time, but one of the things that we've brought up in the past is thinking about need in terms of which issue is kind of like prominent, like housing or something like that. And what we've come to is that we don't actually, I don't think I just, there, it's not for me. We don't want to take away from an organization, like for example, there's services for blind Brattleboro residents, and that might not be on the radar every year, but the money that they get every year is really important to their budget. So, for them, that's really important. For, you know, single parents, it's really important that we're funding the childcare services. So, even if people aren't kind of debating about it, we realize we need to make sure we look at all the services needed. That's why we don't do that specifically.
All right. Other, other board members want to speak?
You know, maybe just some comments, and, and I know that this came up in, in town meeting last year, and I remember asking the question precisely, I, and I think the answer was no, but please correct me if I'm wrong. I, I made the assumption, I think, that all organizations that you award money to are actually functioning 501(c)(3)'s within the Brattleboro community. I think last year, that wasn't necessarily true. Correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then, and what spring, there's a few organizations that spring to mind that, that got, that got no help from, from this, from this fund, one of which was the Mover, all right? And, and we saw kind of what is, what, what the impact that may have had on services and the, and the Micro mover and things like that, and I don't know that that little bit of money would have helped, but I just, I'm curious as to like why, why an, a, an organization that is not a registered 501(c)(3) was awarded money when something like, again, the Mover was not?
So, I'll ask David to, maybe, David, you can respond to the 501(c)(3) question, and then I can talk about the Mover.
So, Seth, if you could bring up the application? So, on the application, we are, we are asking for an EIN number, we are asking if they have a 990, we are looking, looking for nonprofit status. There are some nonprofits that may be affiliated with an organization. And so, Peter, we are, we are identifying, trying to identify, you know, the nonprofit status, the non, non, nonprofit functionality of, of each, each organization.
With regards to the Mover, the Mover was a pretty special example, actually. When the Mover came to us the year prior and asked for funding, we were really, really clear that we didn't believe that that, that transfer, public transportation was under the guise of human services. We didn't think that that was actually necessarily an appropriate use of those funds moving forward, but we thought it was such a valuable program that we said, we will fund this program as a pilot program in the hopes that the town, or that the Mover finds other funding sources elsewhere, from the towns that it's serving, from the state itself, from downtown businesses whose employees make use of that work, of that service, things like that. And we were really, really, really clear, this is a one-time offer only. We were clear in our cover letter to the, to RTM, to the Select Board, et cetera. And then, the Mover requested funding anyway. And so, we couldn't say, no, what, you know what, you're right, we, we're, we're going to actually not do what we said we were going to do. So, that's, that's why we decided to not fund the Mover. We, you know, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of things that fit under human services. We think public transportation is a different public good that ought to be provided in part by government, but on different budget.
Yeah. And again, I'm, I'm not just singling out the Mover, it's just the first thing that came out. There were some faith-based charities, I think, that didn't get any funding as well that provide food and meals.
Yep.
To people who are food insecure that also didn't get funded.
Yep.
So, I mean, I, I just use the Mover as an example, but I'm.
So, each organization that you're going to bring up, we will have a good reason for why it is that we didn't fund them, right? It's not, there's no, and I, we can go through each one if that's helpful. But again, like, we're really thoughtful, why this organization, why not this organization? And the, the organizations that have been funded in the past that are not formal nonprofit organizations also provided really vital services, we felt, right? And a lot of them are fiscally sponsored by other organizations, and so, we're adding this additional piece of rigor around financial transparency, financial viability to ensure that piece of it. But we want to make sure, this is a, this is a town that is often served by small and scrappy efforts, and we want to make sure that those small and scrappy efforts, if we think that they're warranting funding based on our analysis of it, should get those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Oscar, do you have comments?
No, I don't think so. Not right now, but thank you both.
I would love to follow up with one more comment, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
Chair. Chair, mine. The reality of our budget situation for the town of Brattleboro is, it's difficult, and we're going to go into another difficult budgeting situation for our municipality, facing the exact same challenges that all of our nonprofits are facing currently. So, I will ask from my seat at the Select Board table to, if we question, if we have concerns, it's not because we mean to do harm, it's because we share the exact same financial stress. Don't I wish that the town of Brattleboro could say yes to 100% of everything, be exceptionally generous, give more, but the fact is, we cannot. We will try to the best of our ability, but please do not villainize us for saying, I'm sorry, we can only do this much, we wish we could do more. Anyway, that's that.
I'll just say one thing in response to that, which absolutely, I think we're all looking at a pretty dismal financial future across the board. And, you know, every member of this committee is also a taxpayer in this town, and so, we are thoughtful about the tax burden as well, and we know that there's a lot of different considerations that you all are making in terms of the budget as a whole. And also, my argument has always been that there are services that these organizations provide that in a town of a slightly larger size would be provided by the town itself as a budget item. And instead, we are, we are really, really lucky that we have these nonprofits that are providing these services, and the bang for the buck that we're getting from this amount of money is far and away more cost-effective than it would be if these organizations weren't filling those particular needs. And so, thinking about the sort of cost benefit of that is something that I would ask y'all to consider as well.
Okay. My turn. Again, thank you for coming, and, and thank you for the work that you do. I wanted to go back to the statement that you made, David, about all of the people who are, are asking for funding have the respect of the process and all, and the totality of everyone's ask. And because I've seen in, in my time, not just on the Select Board, but as an RTM member, this number really jump. Not, not, and I'm talking, not just the number as a whole, which is approximately half a million dollars, but each individual ask, in some cases, have really ballooned. And I think that it's getting away from the intent of our, our mission, our human service mission, which was to indicate municipal support, but not to take on such a large role in an individual nonprofit's finances. So, we're saying, you know, like, like there, there were several big jumps, like when I first joined the Select Board, the, the amount was probably $100,000 in total, and nobody really asked for or got more than $5,000. And now, it's, it moved, and some places get $20,000, and last year, somebody asked for 100. So, I want to really know, I, I think you need to have some sort of a threshold to, to talk about that with the, all the nonprofits, because I think, you know, you used the word I'm concerned that there's a disparity there, and that respect is being lost. And the reason that I'm asking is that the Select Board has a responsibility within the budget process to the taxpayers. And I just, I'm, I'm worried that the mission and the original spirit of this program is getting lost unless, unless you demand that respect of everyone respecting the process. Sure.
Hi. So, what did you think the mission or the original spirit of the program was? You said it's getting lost. What, what is it?
That we would be demonstrating municipal support for all the various nonprofit services, but not so much as to be a major contributor of their financial picture. And, and I think that that spirit has gotten lost. Would you like to comment on that, David? Would you like to comment on that, David?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I certainly appreciate what you're saying. And I think that, that the tenor of what was happening changed last year as organizations were encouraged to, to apply for whatever they thought they needed. And $770,000 spoke to that. I mean, I was flabbergasted at, at, at the amount of the request.
Well, maybe they could be disencouraged.
Well, and, and so, and we, we did, we did talk about that at the, at the Q and A. And, and, you know, you know, as we, we'll get through the process, and I think that we will, as we were reviewing it, we really had to actually go through. And, and that was part of the decision process. You know, this, this is too much. And, and so, you know, people had to be, you know, organization requests had, had to be, had to be cut to, so, so we could get, get to, down, down to the number. So, you know, I think we'll see, we'll see what comes through. And if it repeats itself, maybe we, as, as a committee, you know, will look, you know, to, you know, put together a cap. I know that we've had some discussion about that. But, you know, we'll, we'll see how it plays out. But, you know, we recognize the importance that we've been allocated up to a certain amount. It's not guaranteed to give out. And, you know, so, you know, we, we, we take, we take that responsibility seriously.
Well, thank you, David. I'm very glad to hear that. And, you know, and I know, as, as Amanda said, you know, this work is appreciated, but it is part, you know, our municipal finances are, are being very closely watched by every taxpayer, including the five of us and your committee members as well. And we're in this together. And so, you know, municipal services are being looked at very carefully. And I think, you know, your, your, your program needs to be part of that, very close scrutiny. And so I thank you all again, and let's hear from the public.
You talked a lot about committee members recusing themselves for conflict of interest and not getting to vote on organizations they are affiliated with. Can you tell me, how many of those organizations have been denied funding that a committee member belongs to?
Off the top of my head, I, I can't tell you, Dick. I don't know.
Have any?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. Interesting. You know, and the committee knows, that I have a real craw, and I'm not here.
Dick, you speak to me.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to speak to the committee, but I'll speak to you. I have a real craw that an organization has applied for funding and has been, been denied the last two years. They feed more people in Brattleboro than probably several restaurants in town. And the word that is used is precedent. And I really get tired, and I said this last year, so it's not anything new that the committee members haven't heard. And I'm not speaking for that organization. I'm speaking in frustration because I know what they do. And then the organization, I believe, the, the committee hides behind the affiliation of church and state in the word precedent. The board does many things in many organizations that, when they do it for a first time, it's a precedent. But doesn't mean the next time another, another organization comes through that you're going to make the same decision or give funding to. So it's very frustrating to me, as a taxpayer, that I see an organization doing such good for the community and surrounding towns that, and they can't get a dime from the town. And I'm paying a significant amount in my taxes to go to this, where there might be organizations that are getting money, that if I had to fund on an individual basis, I might not write them a check. And this is a tad amount that's been going on for quite a few years, and people have said it's forced giving. And I think that there really needs to be a big discussion about that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. David, do you wish to comment on, on?
So, yeah.
Do you want to add that same purchase?
So, excuse me. I know that the, the organization that Dick was talking about did speak to town council, and they provided guidance as to, you know, what we probably need, need to, to take place. We, as a committee, also talked with them specifically about
Pathways.
What would have to take, you know, take place to, in order to, to be able to, you know, I think, you know, meet, meet the needs. And, and I think that, and I thought that conversation went well. And so, you know, if they've been able to do what we talked about and what we outlined, I know that they were talking about changes in presentation and formatting and accounting and so forth, which they knew that needed to be done, then certainly they're welcome to apply again.
Thank you, David. Are there any more comments from the public? Great.
Can I just say one more thing, Elizabeth? I, I just, I, just to get to the, the point, Dick, that you made about, about funding things that we don't, wouldn't necessarily personally believe in or make use of. I don't have any children in this town, and I, my tax, my tax dollars go towards paying for the public schools here. Right? I think that's part of what it means to be a taxpayer in a community, is we don't, we vote, we get to be a part of the decision-making process, but ultimately, our tax dollars go to what those votes make decisions about. And so RTM has approved this funding, hope that it's continued. I understand the frustration, that there may be some efforts that people wish they weren't being funded, but I think that that's across the board as being a citizen in a public society.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you for this discussion.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Bittersweet Lane request. John, you want to tell us about that?
Do we have representatives from Sursasmo Lumber here? Invite you up to the.
So I'm John Goodell from SVE Associates.
And Michael Sursasmo from Sursasmo Industries.
Gentlemen, welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, so, John, do you want to introduce the topic?
So we've had a request from Sursasmo Industries to have the board reconsider the decision about Bittersweet Lane, which is a 500-foot dead-end road off of, I think it's off Meadowbrook?
East Orchard.
East Orchard, southeast Orchard. And a number of years ago, they've done a development there on this property of, I think, seven lots or so. And the road has been private as part of that development. It came before the board in 2016, and the board did a site visit and considered whether to turn that into a public road and have the town take over maintenance of the road. And at the time, the board denied that request, but they said, why don't you come back when more of the development has been built out? And I think our recent request from, from Sursasmo Industries is letting you know that, that, that the development has been built out now, and requesting whether it's time to consider converting it from a private road to a public road. And I guess I would invite you guys to expand on that, and, or if I got anything wrong there, please correct me.
I guess the one thing that I would add is that it was a 2007 development that had a development agreement with the town, that specifically, from the very beginning of that project, contemplated building the town, the road to town specifications, and ultimately that the town would take it over as a street. And the condition 10 of that development agreement between the developer and the town read that the developer shall not submit a petition to the town to accept ownership of the road until such time as there are a minimum of three occupied new homes accessing the road. So it was very much discussed and part of approvals through. And now all seven lots have been sold, and there are five houses currently there.
Appreciate that.
That sounds great.
Yeah, so the, the board, but what staffer brought to you is a proposal or recommendation, if you wanted to consider the, the possibility of, of accepting this as a public road, the process by which you would do that is to schedule a site visit and a public hearing, notice the neighbors, notice the public in general, and then do the site visit, hold a public hearing, and determine whether the road meets, that your standard to consider is whether the action is in the public good, public convenience, and public necessity. And so we could do that sometime in the next month or so, if you wish to, to do that. Or if, if not, you, you, there's no, nothing compelling you to do it, but I would think at least taking a look at the site and, and holding a public hearing could be a good faith measure towards this request.
Great. Are there members of the board who'd like to comment? Yes, Oscar?
Having looked this over, I think we should do it. We should set up a site visit.
Anyone else? Okay, let's, well, let's hear from the public, and then we'll, we'll take a vote. Would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, Dick is.
Just let us make the motion first.
All right.
And then, Dick.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing submission. Let me read the right one.
Yep.
Okay, I'll go, I'll do that one now. Spoiler alert on that one, apologize.
That's because the glasses are on the top of your head.
Either for seeing far. All right, I'll make the motion to lay out Bittersweet Lane from the intersection of East Orchard Street to its terminus as a Class III town highway, and to conduct a site visit on that matter on November 18th, 2025, beginning at 4:00 PM, with the public hearing to be conducted afterward that evening at the Select Board meeting room.
Well, that's very specific. Thank you. All right, Dick, did you want to discuss?
I strongly support this. I was on the board in 2016 when this came before us. They did have a development agreement and do still have that development agreement. I believe the discussion was more based on the number of houses that were built, but I still felt that with that development agreement, this should have been adopted by the town. So I hope that this process goes through, and I hope all five of you fulfill the town's part of the bargain to adopt this as a town road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right. I'll just have a few comments. What I know from these words is that we're likely to spend about $7,000 a year, but the taxes that are paid are probably four times that. And that the most important or significant part was that the roads were built to town standards at the time. And so those are the salient points to me. I think we should have, go through with this process. Is there anything else you'd like to say before we take a vote?
No, I think it's fairly cut and dry, and it's just time to go look at the road again.
Great. Okay.
Can I just ask a couple of clarifying questions here?
Sure.
I mean, having, the last time we went on a field trip was Detman Drive. I don't think there was any, any, any question as to us taking ownership of that bridge so we could rebuild it and do that. My question is, this does seem pretty cut and dry. Is my motion actually indeed necessary? Or is this something that we all feel comfortable just pulling the trigger on tonight and being done?
I haven't seen this road. I don't want to vote without having seen it. Go ahead.
And you do need to hold a public hearing, which has not been noticed, so I would suggest you just do.
As I said, then we should just do my motion. Go ahead.
Okay. Peter has moved to lay out Bittersweet Lane from the intersection of East Orchard Street to its terminus as a Class III town highway, and to conduct a site visit on that matter on November 18th, 2025, beginning at 4:00 PM, with a public hearing to be conducted afterward that evening at the Select Board meeting room. All Select Board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And there we are, 5-0. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you at the meeting.
Absolutely.
All right. Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust Scattered Site Grant. It's always nice to see you, Mr. Whitney.
Nice to see you, Elizabeth.
Okay. We will be opening a public hearing to hear the presentation by Bruce Whitney of the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust, who is the Director of Home Ownership. And is there a title to this?
Yes, this is for Vermont Community Development Program Scattered Site Grant in the amount of $540,000. And Mr. Whitney will explain this program and the, the benefits of it.
Great. Mr. Whitney?
Great. Thank you, everybody. Bruce Whitney, Director of Home Ownership with Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust. Thank you so much to the town of Brattleboro for supporting us on this grant request and supporting us since 2013. This is a community development block grant funding request. The dollars come down from the federal government to the state. We apply through a municipality. We've been applying through the town of Brattleboro since 2013 for these funds. These funds support our home repair program, where we provide health and safety loan, loans to income-eligible people to, to make health and safety repairs to their homes. It supports our housing counseling program, where we provide education and counseling to people wanting to buy homes. And it supports both of those programs throughout the two-county area we serve, Wyndham and Windsor Counties. Over the years, around 25% of, of the people we serve are Brattleboro residents. So we are, we are, main offices are located in Brattleboro, and, and we certainly serve Brattleboro to that extent. This is going to fund our program for the next calendar year. And then we go through an enhancement process, and it, we fund it two more years, and then you'll come, you'll, I'll come back and we'll close that grant. And I'll ask for, we'll be back to ask for the grant again in about three years. This, this program, our, our goals for this coming year are to serve 352 households. 27 of those will be completed home repair projects. And then we, we'll educate about 325 households. And then we, we'll educate about 325 households. And around 30 people buy homes through our program every year. As I said, we started the program in 2000 and we've completed 652 home repair projects over that time, lending out about $7 million, 6.9 million. We revolve these, these loan funds and lend them out. We do get new capital every once and again from, from these grant funds. We're asking for 123,000 of, of new capital. Right now, our capital portfolio is 2.6 million in 250 loans. So 123,000 is going to go into that pool. About $375,000 supports the staff for the home repair program. The special sauce on that program is the construction oversight we provide. It's a loan program and then our repair specialists go out and look at the home. We have to remediate all, all major health and safety items we find in the home. People come to us and say, my roof is leaking. And we're like, great, okay. And we go out and we look at the roof and yep, it's leaking. And, you know, there's a GFCI needed there, you know, some safety things here and there. And we develop a scope of work and a budget and then help the homeowners identify contractors. We sign a two-party contract and, and make progress payments as the work is completed. So it's, it's very much, a lot of oversight is going into it. So.
Great.
That is the program.
I just want to say that it's a really valuable service that you provide and you're not only keeping people in their homes, but you're keeping the integrity of the home. And I, Brattleboro is pleased to be the conduit for your work and it is such a valuable, not only to 25% of your people living in Brattleboro, but the other 75 as well. So it's a great program and do my colleagues wish to comment?
I'll echo what Liz just said. It's a great conduit for us.
I agree. I mean, any program that helps with our aging infrastructure of our homes and entire state of Vermont is just so helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, a couple of comments there is the state actually increased the amount of money going into this program because of, because of the aging house stock, housing stock. And a big thank you to the staff. You know, there's a fair amount of work that goes into this relatively complex program. John had to submit the, the, the grant application remotely yesterday and so thank you for, for doing all that work.
Yes, you're more than welcome, I'm sure. Are there members of the public who wish to comment? Dick?
With all the background noise, how, how much of the 540,000 goes to Wyndham Housing Staffing? Did I, did I hear you say 300 and something thousand?
375,000 is going to Wyndham and Windsor Staffing for the home repair program. About 50,000 is going to staffing for the counseling program.
So that doesn't really leave a whole lot of money going to the housing repair program?
I think, I think that Mr. Whitney said there, there was substantial amount of money.
Well, that, that's funding the staff that runs the program and then 123,000 is going into the loan capital pool from this 540.
So there's revolving money and then there's new capital, correct?
New capital. And then there's the staff, licensed lending staff and repair specialists overseeing the repairs and, and making sure that, that contractor's doing the repairs.
Well, my, my point is we're talking about the 540,000, not any other money. And so when you tell me that you're taking 300 and something thousand and then another 50,000, that doesn't leave a whole lot of other money that goes into the criteria of what you're trying to provide. I think it's a great service, don't get me wrong, but when 65, 70% of the money is going for administrative costs.
No, those aren't administrative costs. 18,000 is going to administrative costs. 375 is staffing, this staff doing the work. 18,000, thank, sorry, yes, 18,000 is, is funding the administration. Sandy Garland paying the checks.
Thank you. Better clarification.
Okay, is there anyone else? Is there anyone online? Hi, then are the tenants of our public hearing been administered?
Yes, you could close.
All right. I hereby close the public hearing and I will ask for a motion.
True.
Oscar?
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing submission of a grant application for a Vermont Community Development Program VCDP Scattered Site Grant in the amount of 540,000 to support Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust to deliver a home repair program, counseling advocacy and first-time home buyer services.
Great. Oscar has made a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of the grant application for a Vermont Community Development Program VCDP Scattered Site Grant in the amount of 540,000 to support Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust to deliver a home repair program, counseling advocacy and first-time home buyer services. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That was five to zero. I would. Let's take our break now and then we'll go into the Black Mountain Road Discontinuance Project.
Come back.
And here we all are.
Okay.
Like magic.
Round, this is not rounded.
Oh, Brian and Dan?
And Dan, yeah.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order, please. And welcome Dan and Brian to the table. Would you like to tell us about the Black Mountain Road discontinuance project?
Sure, we got a transportation alternatives program grant to do scoping study to discontinue a portion of Black Mountain Road that has a history of washing out. It will also look at a culvert at the top side of that segment and another one next to Black Mountain Home Park. Both of those are undersized. The one at Black Mountain has caused flooding in the park. And the one at the top is undersized, and if it were to fail, it would wipe out access to both Kipling and to Black Mountain Road. So during a very large flood event, we could have another road washout and also lose those two culverts and cause additional flooding to the Mobile Home Park. So what we're looking at is narrowing the road so that the floodplain, which has been filled to create the road, will be open again. There'll be enough room to convey floodwaters. The road that would remain would be on top of the sewer line. It could be designed to protect it against further erosion. Then we'd be looking to get properly sized culverts at both the top and bottom. And the stream is impaired for sediment. And of course, having the road erode into it or collapse into it is a major source of sediment. At some point, there will have to be a cleanup effort to bring the stream into compliance. This is a cost-effective way of dealing with that by getting rid of a major source of sediment, which of course is what's impairing the stream. It's a high priority project on the part of the state for clean water and the technical basin plan. So our state partners are very enthusiastic about finding funds in the clean water funds to help us execute this project if it proves to be feasible.
Great, Dan, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think, you know, like Brian said, we're looking at that gravel section of Black Mountain Road. It's, in the last 10 years, there's at least four major flood events where the brook overtopped the road, and we've done some significant repairs. And then on top of that, it's just like, it's so channelized, it's constant, that the edges of the road wash out, we're up there armoring it, trying to put it back together. So, you know, I think on top of the environmental concerns, it's a huge maintenance nightmare at this point, and, you know, looking at options for improving it are definitely worthwhile.
And you can do this because there's an alternative. There's a, there's kind of a circular loop there that people can use instead.
Kipling Road to Dickinson.
Right.
Which really isn't too far out of the way.
Does everyone know what we're talking about? Okay, good. It's interesting because I have a, I know people who live and use that road all the time, and they're like, "Oh, you're closing your road." And then they came back to me and they said, "Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's a good idea." But this proposal is to study it. And you got two bids, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so both bids came under budget. Both of them were excellent. Really, they scored pretty much adroitly. Both firms have a lot of experience in this type of project, so we just went with the low bidder. And it's about $9,000 less than them who were anticipating, so.
Great. And there's a real environmental benefit associated with this that we really need to highlight because this is a water quality issue, right?
Yeah, you know, eventually it's going to have to be addressed, and the state would be the ones to come up with the maximum daily load, and they'd have to portion the cost of the mitigation. But again, this is an action that could probably take care of the problem entirely and prevent that burden from going on to private property owners.
Can we get the state to pay for this?
I suspect we can get the state to pay for most of it. I'm not sure if we can get them to pay for all of it.
And do you know the process by which you could ask the state to pay for this?
We've had consultations with the folks who have analyzed the brook before, and they are extremely enthusiastic about finding funding for this.
But we'd have to do the study first.
We have to do the study, get the costs of doing the project, get a little bit of preliminary engineering so that we can get the permitting done.
And the study, is this engineers, like water quality engineers or roadway engineers or combination thereof?
Yeah, it's a team, so there's civil engineers, there's people who do hydraulic modeling, and some landscape architects, and then also some folks with multi-use pathway experience in other communities in Vermont. One of the happy benefits of this is we'd have to maintain some access to maintain the sewer line, and that could be used as a multi-use pathway, which could be a nice connection to SIT in particular because there's, you're kind of taking your life on your hands to walk or bike on those roads.
True. All right, are there select board members who'd like to comment? Yes, Oscar?
Thank you. If this study goes well, is there any sense, how long are we talking possibly until this is all done, if things go smoothly?
It depends how fast the different grant funding streams go. I think the clean water ones probably go a little bit faster than the federal hazard mitigation grants. I think it would require an environmental assessment, so that would add some time. I would say two years probably would be conservative.
Okay. And when it actually, I assume there will come a point where a public hearing or something like that, communication with the people who live there, but that would happen at the step after the study?
So the study will open with some preliminaries with town staff and the consultants, then there'll be a public hearing so people can give preliminary feedback. They'll go back and develop concepts, and then they'll come back to the public and do a kind of final concept presentation before we adopt a final plan.
Great, thanks, that's all I had.
I have a question, so on the one, two, three, four, the fifth line where it says state grant award amount was 44,000 with 11 million, is that, is that just a little, like an extra zero there? Eleven, so it's the 11,044 is the?
Match.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
The scope of work, is it, okay, cool. And is there a chance that will there be potential opportunity to, like post-completion to capture a grant for a portion of the town match? Once the study's complete?
I think as far as this grant, you know, it's already in budget. We won't spend the full amount that we had set aside for the match, but I don't anticipate that we'd be able to get any additional funding for that.
Okay, but it would make us more competitive for a better grant for the completion of the work?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Just one question.
Yes?
Just to clarify, are we talking about permanent closure of this section of Black Mountain Road? That's the idea?
Yeah, the roadway is actually built in the floodplain, and the floodplain wasn't mapped previously, but our updated map showed clearly that the flood fringe extends entirely across the roadway.
And it will, at its final stage, there will be public access?
Yes.
It will not be a road?
There's a sewer line and overhead power utilities that run up there, so there would still need to be access.
So it could be some sort of mountain bike trail or something like that? Great.
It makes for some pretty nifty cycling.
There you go. Would someone like to make a motion?
I can, I think I can handle that. I want to make the motion to authorize the town manager to accept the bid from MSK Engineers for the scoping study for the discontinuance of the segment of Black Mountain Road and the replacement of two culverts, 80% funded by municipal highway and storm water mitigation grant program with a 20% town match.
Great. Is there any public discussion? Hearing none? Are there any more select board comments? All right, let's vote. Peter has made a motion to authorize the town manager to accept the bid from MSK Engineers for a scoping study for the discontinuance of a segment of Black Mountain Road and the replacement of two culverts, 80% funded by the municipal highway and storm water mitigation grant program with a 20% town match. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And there we are, 5-0. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Parking ordinance revision.
Yeah, so.
That's exciting.
Our next item is second reading on parking ordinance changes, and Assistant Chief Evans and Highway Superintendent Pacheco are here to run us through the second reading and see if we're ready to move forward on this ordinance.
And Melanie Khan said this rest of the meeting was going to be boring.
You saved the best part for last, right? Good evening, Jeremy Evans, I'm Assistant Police Chief.
Darren Pacheco, Highway Superintendent.
So we have the second reading for you, here for you, that you all got in your packets for the proposed changes to the ordinance, the parking ordinances. So these amendments were developed based on your recommendations from the June 3, 2025 meeting, and were first introduced at the September 24 meeting. At that time, no additional changes were recommended. So if no new recommendations are made here, the select board may, with the motion, move to approve this as the final reading.
All righty. Well, shall we go over the main tenets of it and then see if there's any comments or questions?
So the three main ordinances that we're looking at, that there was no recommended changes at our prior meeting, would be adding the BRAT team member to the definition of police officer within Chapter 16. Changing the appeals process to incorporate a online appeals process, and also adding additional steps with the new oversight of the police department, that there is now a three-step appeals process instead of originally a two-step. And lastly, the addition of free days of parking during the holiday season, which would be the day after Thanksgiving, the first two weekends in December, and seven days preceding Christmas.
Great. Select board members, do you have any comments? Are there comments from members of the public? I have a question, John. This motion is longer than this, it has this final reading, blah, blah, blah. Should I read this?
Yeah, read that one, yeah.
All right. Oscar, would you, would you like to make this motion?
Sure.
And do I include this stuff about amendments?
Yes, yeah, the whole.
I move that the select board approve the ordinance amendments to Chapter 16 traffic as presented and adopt them as the final reading, with the amendments to be incorporated into the town's ordinances as directed by the select board.
Thank you, Oscar.
Thank you.
All right, Oscar's made a motion to move that the select board approve the ordinance amendments to Chapter 16 traffic as presented and adopt them as the final reading, with the amendments to be incorporated into the town's ordinances as directed by the select board. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
There we go, 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, nice work.
Happy Park.
Thank you so much! It's a touchdown, finally! It was like, got there!
The swiftness of our.
It's awesome, that's hard work, that was so, that was a process.
Does not indicate that we think any less of your work. All right. Dick is yawning, we better hurry up. The last item is regional.
Yep, there's two more.
Oh, there's two more. Regional assessing districts. Jennifer?
Yes, Jennifer Burnell is here to join us, to fill us in on the regional assessing districts concept.
Good evening, everybody. I hope to be brief, I just wanted to give you a little update on what the legislature has.
Jennifer, I think you need to speak directly into the microphone.
Okay. I'm Jennifer, Town Assessor, and I'm here to give you just a brief update on the regional assessing districts. The legislature in '23 passed Act 68, which, it was a long conversation about the state taking over reappraisals. And that was, what came out of the conversation was for towns to be reappraised townwide every six years. There is an ability for towns to do a statistical update in between those six years, if necessary. And for the common level of appraisal to be removed as the trigger for reappraisals, for the state to mandate a reappraisal. Act, in 2025, Act 73 passed, and out of four, that was a big bill, but included in it were some things that affect the assessor's office. I won't go through that entire bill, just focus on what might affect the assessor's office. So there is an introduction of three classifications, property classifications. So currently, we have homestead and non-homestead, and there is, in addition to that, would be, it would be non-homestead residential and non-homestead non-residential. And I would ask that you look into the bill to have more of an understanding and breakdown because that's, that is, there's a lot that goes into that. The commissioner, tax commissioner, is tasked with different tax rates that are associated with these. So this is all very statewide, but it will filter into our office, and it's just something to look, to be aware of. Within the bill, I just have to say that at the end, school districts that are being shaped, if they're not, if they don't pass the new districts, school districts, then this stuff doesn't happen. Regional assessing districts is a big conversation within our office, and the intent of those, having assessing done on a regional level is to reappraise more often. That's now been taken care of with the six-year cycle. There was no timeline other than the triggers of the CLA and the COD originally. So now we have the six-year cycle. The other intent is for property data collection to be standardized. Some of that is coming from standardizing computer mass appraisal systems. There are, I think, five currently used in the state of Vermont. That conversation is, right now, a talk of one CAMA system. But the vendors are, have been asked to, they've been asked by the state to have their system work with the VT PI system. And the third is for training within assessing, assessor and lister offices. The regional assessing districts, or the RADs, right now, it's mapped out countywide. They're taking two different, four different towns and combining two, I think it's, I can't remember the names of the towns, but anyway, they're combining, so it's 12 regional assessing districts. The director of PVNR was asked to put together a working group on that stakeholder group. We've met three times, and given the director recommendations as to how a regional assessing district would, how it would look, how we would like it to look if it were to come together. What it would look like for appeals on a regional level. And the, I think it was a request to change the assessing date from April 1st to January 1st. That's been positively received. So there's a lot to look at in how that would affect other, your homestead declarations, just other pieces of state programs. We've made other recommendations as well, and we have one more meeting. I guess we're going to look at the report that will be presented in January to the legislature. And the other important piece for Bratton Borough to be aware of is the training they're trying to professionalize lister and assessor offices. It is required for listers to have a Level 1 Vermont. We already have a Vermont Property Assessor Certification Program that was established a number of years ago. So using that program, listers are to have a list of training to qualify for the VPA 1 level, and assessors must require, must establish the VP2 level. A lot of these courses are either funded through a state A lot of these courses are either funded through a state grant that we need to apply for, or the state has free classes, but there will be an additional amount that the town will have to cover for training. So it's mandatory. And it will be, I think, a slight increase to my budget, but not a lot. And I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Sure.
And so this is interesting. And I just want to clarify for everyone that what you're talking about is changes to state law in the appraisal and reappraisal process. It really has nothing to do with the reappraisal that's currently being conducted and of much interest to our taxpayers.
Right. It won't take effect until January 2029. And there's a lot of information that still needs to go to the legislature.
But it's interesting that there is a committee and you're on it. It's a statewide committee, and it's nice that you have a voice on that, on our behalf.
Yeah, I'm privileged, I feel.
Great. All right, any comments, anyone?
I had a question, Jennifer. You mentioned extra cost for staff trainings, some compensated by the state, but not 100% of the training cost to the, for the town.
Yeah.
And then is there additional software that's also going to be required? And will the state, is the state going to commit to compensating municipalities if that's the case?
No. So the, we have a new CAMA software coming for the reappraisal, you know, during the reappraisal. We'll be switching from an old CAMA system to a new CAMA system. But the training requirements, there, understanding the ethics of assessment, there's bias training, there are levels of understanding assessment, you know, how to data collect and how to value properties. So that's, that's professionalizing, but not an additional piece of software that is coming into our office.
So not a large anticipated budget.
Correct.
And also, do you have concerns that during the retraining process, that there will be a scarcity of listers that are actually fully qualified to do their job, or?
I'm not concerned about Bratton Borough.
Okay. Great.
But I think there is a concern statewide.
Gentlemen, any comments? Jennifer, thank you very much. Wait, wait, wait. Are there members of the public who would like to comment? Dick?
The state's going through, obviously, we're all aware of, the reorganization of the school districts. And I believe the number is five, that there will be five districts what they're looking at? Or is it a larger number than that?
I haven't guessed. Do you?
They are working on that now. So there are task force, there's.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm following. I watched it, I watched the news.
Yeah, so.
And so do you have anything on, like what are, I thought I saw one drawing that showed us going to Wilmington and then north up into Bellows Falls.
As far as school districts, I couldn't say. And I know that we're, so the conversations that we're having for this regional assessing district, how that would look is it's, we're looking at recommending it to be in line, or some are, anyway, in line with the way the school districts. So a lot of it will depend on how that shapes. It might not.
Will, will every, every district that's within the larger district, every town, have to have been reappraised by the time this all starts?
No. No.
Any other members of the public? Is there anyone online? Okay, you stumped us, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Let's see, monthly budget update for August.
Yep. So the Finance Department has provided you with an August 2025 finance report. It has line item details of activities in the town's general fund as well as utilities and parking funds. With 16.7% of the fiscal year completed, we are pretty much on track with revenues in general fund annualized. We are at 15.7% of budget, and expenditures are slightly below the, the expected amounts when it's prorated at 15% of the annual budget. Total revenues in the general fund are $20,177,119, and total expenses are running at $4,415,388, with a surplus of $15,761,731. And currently, as of August 31st, cash balances in the general fund totaled $17.1 million. In the total revenues of $20 million, approximately 14.8 of those are receivables, which include general receivables, EMS receivables, current and delinquent taxes, net of school taxes, and interest and penalties, as well as solid waste bag revenue. A few things worth, that the Finance Department called out, worth noting, are that utility costs are rising, and we are likely to exceed on budget for utilities in fiscal '26, they're projecting that. We're also projecting over, that overtime budgets, especially with fire, police, and dispatch are also running over current spending, and so we'll be keeping an eye on that. Utilities fund with 16.7% of the year completed, revenues are running at 15.5% and expenditures at 10% of annual budget. So total revenues in utilities for the fiscal year are running at $1.1 million, and expenses are at $724,000 with a surplus of $376,000. In the parking fund, revenues are running higher than expected at 18.6% of the annual budget, and expenditures slightly below at 13.2%. So there, in the parking fund, we have total revenues of $190,000, total expenses of $135,000, and a surplus of about $55,000. There's also a loan report, a grant report, and a transfer report included in the financial report. And happy to try to answer any questions, if you have any. And if I don't know the answer, I will get you the answer.
Great. Go ahead, Isaac.
Thank you for sharing these areas worth notation. That's very helpful. The overtime budgets for police and fire and dispatch, we saw significantly, significant increases in the staffing in, for both police and fire this past spring, when we worked on this fiscal year's budget, and with the creation of new positions. And in the case of fire, the idea was this is going to reduce the overtime costs that we were seeing from last year that were not expected. Can you speak to why we're seeing these increases despite those decisions that we made?
A little bit. I do know that we have not filled all those positions, and even when we do, there'll be a period of training to get them up to speed and able to not have to fill the minimum manning with overtime staff. That's, I think, the, pretty much the main reason. The, you know, that would be a great question for the fire chief at his next quarterly report, but basically, that's my understanding of what's driving that, so.
And with the dispatch, I remember we, we actually cut that. That was one of, the one area, I think, for police, fire, and fire, where we were looking at making a reduction, and it was like a half of a position. Do you know if it's related to that decision that we made, that we're seeing this increase?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Okay, Peter, do you have any comments?
Question about, it says our parking revenues are up. And is that, does that have anything to do with any of the rental that we're seeing as of yet, or is that just straight?
It, that might, there might be a slight impact from that.
Okay, oh, that's good. I was curious.
Yep. But I also think that we projected revenues conservatively in that budget, and I think the, some of the changes that you've made are starting to, to manifest.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
How about this side of the aisle? Amanda, do you have any comments?
No questions at this time.
Oscar?
I have a broad assortment of questions.
Okay.
And I was out of town, so John and I didn't have our weekly meeting, so some of these probably would have been answered there. Let's see, a couple general ones. I was wondering where we are at in the audit for the last fiscal year, if we are having any luck there.
So we, our initial RFP, we did not get adequate responses, so we've redone the scope of work and have just put out this week a second RFP. We are doing some more targeted outreach to firms that we're aware of, and we hope to have somebody on by November and the audit completed by the end of the year.
Great. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I did want to thank you and Sponny and anyone else who did this. The areas worth notation is great, and the annualizing the property taxes for the revenue side, also great. That, I did have a question, and I'm positive I've asked this before, so apologies, but there are line items for expenses that are also annualized, but that we haven't paid yet, and I'm wondering if those are annualized when we do that calculation. So for the big example, it is like bonds and notes. We budget for $1.3 million, and we haven't spent any of that yet. So is that part of that annualized calculation, or is that shoe all going to drop at one point? And does that sort of throw our projections off?
I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer this correctly.
It doesn't have to be right now.
Yeah, okay. I mean, generally, I would say that, so in your warrant for this week was that payment. So that will now get calculated into the annualized estimate for like your next.
Okay.
But it won't be until we see October.
Yeah.
October's numbers, so.
I guess a good ongoing reminder that we have to, you know, we do our best to annualize these, but we have to take them with a bit of a grain of salt as we go.
Yep.
I'm probably just blanking on this here, but revenues include the full $19.5 million property taxes.
Yep.
And then at the bottom of the first page of the memo, it says revenues include $14.7 million of receivables, including in that list is current and delinquent taxes.
Yep.
But $19.5 million alone is more than $14.7? So I'm, you know what I'm saying?
So nineteen, nineteen point.
I guess maybe.
Five is.
That's the full amount we expect to collect for the year.
Yep. No, it's, yeah, for the property tax.
Right.
Yep.
But then revenues include $14.7 million of receivables.
Yep.
Is that using the two months of property taxes number as part of that? Okay.
Yep. No, it's using, so the, the total revenues of $20.2 million include $14.7 million of receivables, some of which are the property taxes which have not come in yet.
So I don't think we need to sort this out right now, but I guess I'm wondering why there aren't $19.5 million of receivable taxes, like why that second number is relatively low?
Because we've seen, so first payments have come in, so.
Okay, okay. Great. Benefits actually look okay on the expenses side. And I mean, I know we've put those numbers up a bunch in this budget, so maybe an indication that we are budgeting in the vicinity of those, even though they've been a problem? Does that sound?
I think that's, I think that's true.
And I had a question about risk management. We've used, so this is page nine of 17 of the report. We're about 25% through our budget, and does that literally just mean, you know, we have had more workers' comp cases, we have had more, there's just been more use of these costs, or is it that costs themselves are higher?
Debt, I don't know. I don't know exactly, I mean, I think on the liability, for example, we probably have quarterly payments, and we've made a quarterly payment, something like that. In terms of the workers' comp, I'm not sure how that is invoiced to us.
And then last two things, we talked about the overtime. It's, it's going to be rough, and I feel like we're going to have sort of a bumpy budget where we're ahead again in EMS revenue, way, way ahead in receivables on EMS revenue, way behind in overtime, relatively ahead in trash. So if we happen to come out even, it will be a little bit by, I guess, we're about to enter a new budget process, and we should probably try to, we need to put all those overtime numbers up a lot higher for next year, I think, unless our expectations really change.
I mean, it's so tricky, because if you look at, like, our staff salaries, we're running at 12.5%.
Right.
So we're covering a lot of that overtime, like in, I'm looking at fire in particular.
Right.
So we're covering most of that overtime with staff salaries at the moment, and that's the three positions that Isaac was referring to.
Right.
They're just not filled yet, so that's going to the overtime line. I hate to overbudget on overtime and, and raise property taxes higher than we need to. That would just be the challenge there with that one.
Yeah.
But I hear what you're saying.
We'll have to balance that.
Yep.
And then last question, and maybe this has come up before, and I'm just blanking, but what are the brat startup expenses in police? 40K last month, 60K this month without a, this, so this is 12 of 17, and it doesn't look like there was a budget line item for that, so I'm curious about that. It's the last one in the police total.
Yes. I don't know. I can't remember what that is.
Okay, could we?
Yep, I can get you an answer on that.
Great. Okay. That is all I know.
I would just.
Let's ask one question, sorry. So, so for the, the meals and rooms and the sales tax, is that our local one option, like, local option tax percentage completely ours that's in the budget, or do we owe some of that to the state?
Those are revenues to us.
It's just the one that, so that, those are the actual numbers?
They're actuals, yep. It's not what's collected by people, by businesses in town. It's what we receive.
All right, so my comment is really. All right, so my comment is really about the parking fund. And I'm just very pleased to see these numbers because we've been through the mill on the parking budget. And we used to have to borrow from Peter to pay Paul to make the parking budget whole. And now here we are with our revenues exceeding our expenses to the tune of $55,000. So, great. And I just want to, just note that this is a product of the work on the, on the parking rates, the work on, on, on the parking garage. Is all that ceiling business finished?
Yep.
And we're working on the substation?
Yep.
And then also renting the remainder of the ground floor?
Yep, and we have interested parties in all the space there now.
I just wanted to congratulate you and all of us for all of those pieces coming together to make this budget a success.
Thank you, and I think it's really been the board and DPW who have done the heavy lifting on this. And I really appreciate all the work that Pete Lynch in particular has done to make that happen, so.
Great. Well, let's open it up to the public. It's you, Dick. You don't have to look behind.
First question, actually has to do with the HR director has finance director attached to her title. Is she being compensated for that?
Yes, we're, we're paying a small stipend to help cover that need in the finance department for people management.
Well, I certainly would like to know how small that is, if you can have that for the next meeting. When I look at revenue on the first page, I'm, for EMS reimbursement, for July and August, it says we've been reimbursed 311,000. Is that's a rollover number from 2025 where we billed? I, you know, last year when we tried to get numbers for the first couple of months, we were told, we, we don't get reimbursed for 90 days, up to 90 days. So how do we come up with 311,000 here for the first two months? Unless it's possibly a rollover from where we had billed in 2025 and it has come in and it's part of this? Can you, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, that's what it is.
That's what it is?
Yep.
Wait, can you ask that again?
And I guess my follow-up would be, why isn't that revenue applied to 2025 where it would allow the town possibly to have a surplus? Because it's billed in 2025.
There's a cutoff at which point we can't do that anymore. I forget when it is now, but this is all revenue that's come in since that cutoff, where, like, from an accounting standpoint, we can no longer apply it to the previous year.
Okay, and then my, my questions are pretty much primarily for fire overtime and police overtime, and I have a huge concern about both. When I look at the staffing on the police department, and they're fully staffed. And there, and there, is there something in the contract where they're getting all this overtime now? I, I mean, I am really baffled, and you should be too, why this number is so high. Two months, two months, this is only July and August, and it's at $21,000. And then when I look at the fire department, again, July and August, and it's 91 or 92,000 dollars. And so there's, we're probably overbudget right now as we sit here in the fire department overtime. And I believe, my own personal feeling is that the board bought a bad bill of goods in terms of hiring three new officers, fire officers, to mitigate this overtime by at least $100,000. I believe that was the number that was thrown out. And that's not going to ever happen because you're never going to be fully staffed. You're always going to have, you're going to, you have a retiree. We just had a captain retire. And I believe there's a fireman leaving to go to another town. And we're always going to have somebody out sick or on vacation. And so we hired three new staff members. I think you really have to relook at how we handle these callbacks. And I think that this board and the administration needs to get together with rescue, reestablish a relationship so they might, and get a contract with them, where they would be part of, there's a third ambulance call out, they would respond to the call versus us sending people out and having to call people in. I believe that that, I believe that that's going to be a better way for us to save money. And so we need, you can shake your head, John.
I don't agree, but.
That's okay. But the reality is, this isn't going to work. And it shows right now that it's not going to work. And it's really bothersome to me with the police department, and nobody says a word about, why is this so high when you're fully staffed two months in? That really should be concerning all of you. I know dispatch, you cut dispatch, and I think you have some staffing issues there, and I get that. But the police department and the fire department, this is a no-go. This is a, this is going to be a real budget buster.
Dick, this is five minutes. Thank you very much for your comments.
Was I over? I apologize.
It's okay.
I was looking at the number, I thought it was called out.
I'm sorry. All right, thank you for your comments.
I need, can I clarify something with John?
Sure.
So I may have, the 311 and EMS revenue in this report, my understanding is that that is just from claims billed in July and August? Or, yeah, July and August, and that that's not, so that includes?
You'll, you will have revenues coming in from fiscal '25, probably for months still. And we have to log, we have to account for that somewhere.
Right.
We can't keep the books open on fiscal '25 beyond, I think it's July 30th or something like that.
Sure, but in our, you know, in the June financial report, we looked at EMS totals for, basically for the year and said, look at all this money we have coming in. And that included receivables for claims that were billed during FY '25. And then we said, okay, the budget's balanced, give or take. And now, some of that is going to get reclassified into '26 because it's going to come in later. And those numbers based on receivables will look a lot less rosy.
Yep, and, and that will all be apparent in the audit. So we'll see what the, the final outcome was for the close of the fiscal year.
I just think based on that, especially as we get near the end of fiscal years, we need to be a little more careful about the conclusions we're drawing about the state of a fiscal year. Because we probably knew in June, or could have known, that, hey, these claims are not all going to come back in June. So this number is going to be lower, let's say, in the audit or in the final accounting. And the balance for this year is not as good as this table makes it look. And I just want to be really careful about that, especially on this line item where people have so many questions, so.
Sure, yep, absolutely. And I'm not an accountant, so I can't, I can't talk to you too much about modified accrual, but that, that is what we're, you know, tasked with doing our books in that, in that format. And I think that's what the finance department has been doing. I'm not sure there's options for us to do it a different way, but we could certainly ask about that.
I, I think it's probably, accounting is what it is. I think our responsibility falls a little more on the side of the, the narrative conclusions we draw. So I just want us to be really careful there. And, well, it'll, we'll have another opportunity in eight or nine months, so.
Basically, you're saying, like, let's count things either in one fiscal year or the other, not be double counting with.
Yeah, and we're not going to double count them in the end, but it does lead to a July 1st moment of, look how good our revenue was in FY '25, and then later predictably, it's not quite as good. So that's the thing I want to be really sensitive to, so.
Okay, duly noted. Anyone else in the public who should speak? No? Anyone on the floor? Let's make a motion and approve, to approve this report. Someone like to do that?
A motion that we accept the financial report as presented.
Great. Peter has moved to accept the financial report as present, as presented. Select board members in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
There's five zero, one more motion.
A motion to adjourn.
Peter has moved to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Seth. Thank you, VCTV. Thank you, the members of the public. Thank you, John.